Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. The Committee on General Government Operations, Appropriation and Housing convenes this public hearing. Public hearing notice were given to the media. Ladies and gentlemen, let's keep it quiet back there. Joe, Mr. Masgun, Adam. Okay? Public notices were given to the media on Monday, July 8th and July 10th, and today is July 16th. And the time now is nine o'clock, 9:01. The committee will hear and accept testimonies first. The referral of the appointment of Raymond L. Panku, positions member of Guam Real Estate Commission. Term length is four years from date of confirmation. Then Bill 9, LS 9-35 LS, introduced by Senator James C. Moylan, an act to repeal Section 2 of Public Law 34116 and to amend Section 26202 A, C, D, E, F, G, H, I, J, J1 and J2 of Chapter 26 Title 11, Guam Code Annotated Relative to Reducing the Business Privilege Tax from 5% to 4%. And then Bill 10-35, introduced by Senator James Moylan, an act to amend Section 26403 of Article 4, Chapter 26, Division 2, Title 11, Guam Code Annotated Relative to Reducing the Rate of Liquid Fuel Tax by 4 cents per gallon, effective October 1st, 2019. Then Bill 6-35 LS, introduced by Senator Telo Titeguy, an act to repeal Section 8172 of Article 1, Chapter 8, Title 4, Guam Code Annotated Relative to the Responsible Use of Taxpayer Funds to the Elimination of Automatic Retirement Benefits for Elected Guam Governors, Lieutenant Governors, and their survivors. Then Bill 40-35, introduced by Senator Telo Titeguy, an act to amend Section 3, 229C, 7 of Article 2, Chapter 3, Division 1, Title 12, Guam Code Annotated Relative to Establishing. Okay, and then Bill 74-35, SOR, introduced by Speaker Tina Munyon Barnes, an act to appropriate $350,000 to the University of Guam relative to creating and funding the island's sustainability outreach and action. I'd like to acknowledge the presence of my colleagues. I have to my immediate right, I have Senator Regina Beskow Lee. I have to my left, I have Senator Will Castro, and the author of a couple of the bills today, Senator Jim Moylan. General rules for public hearing. We've got a full house. Great. Those testifying will be recognized in the order of sign up on the signing sheet. Written testimony may be read. Lengthy written testimony should be summarized to about five minutes. Everybody testifying will be allowed five minutes to testify, because there's a lot of you. Okay? Written testimony may be summarized to the committee, shall be submitted to the committee. Please provide our legislative staff with your written testimony for photocopying. Testimonies shall be confined to the substance. As we talk about the bill, that's all we're talking about, is that specific bill. Persons will be allowed to present oral testimony once. Once you're done, you may be asked to remain in the room for questions and for additional testimony, as may be desired by the members of the panel. Proper form and decorum shall be practiced by all present in the public hearing room for these proceedings. Individuals who fail to maintain proper form and decorum may be restricted from providing oral testimony and/or may be asked to leave or be escorted/removed from the room. Fair warning, if proper form and decorum is not provided, you will be escorted. We're not going to debate that. Okay? So let's just keep this as polite as possible. When you speak, please make sure that the microphone is on and that you speak into the microphone. And please state your name. I would like to recognize another call. I have two colleagues that have joined us. I have Senator Terese Terlay and Senator Telo Titeguy. We will first begin with the testimony for Raymond Bianco. For his appointment, member of the Guam Real Estate Commission, and I know we have Mr. Chris Felix. Sir, is Mr. Panku here? No, we have Mr. Felix. If you, if you'd like, sir, if you could testify on his behalf.
Thank you, Chair, Honorable Senators. My name is Christopher Felix. I'm the president and principal broker of Century 21 Realty Management. I hold other titles, but none of them apply today, I hope. I just wanted to speak in favor of Ray. He's been an associate of mine for many years. I don't think the governor could have found a better choice for the commission. He's an active real estate broker. He's very well knowledgeable, and I think he brings a lot of good things to the real estate commission that can help. I have served on the real estate commission four or five times myself over the last 45 years, and it can be a very hard working group if they want it to be, and I think Raymond will bring that to it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Does any of my colleagues want to ask Mr. Felix any questions? There being none, and Mr. Panku's not here. This will conclude this hearing, and there's no one else to testify. We will now proceed to Bill Number 9-35, introduced by LS, introduced by Senator Jim Moylan, James Moylan. Mr. Moylan, the author, would you please do your opening statement?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Bill 9-35 LS is an act to repeal Section 2 of Public Law 34116 and to amend subsection 26202 A, C, D, E, F, G, H, I, J, J1 and J2 of Chapter 26 Title 11, Guam Code Annotated Relative to Reducing the Business Privilege Tax from 5% to 4%. When the 34th Guam Legislature first proposed the increase of BBT from 4% to 5%, it was intended to be for six-month solution and not a permanent one. Raising the BBT has had its consequences when it comes to the operational expenditures for businesses. Whether it includes raising their prices, reducing benefits, or halting increments, there were adverse economic results that impacted the community in general. If passing this legislation will result in the lower cost of eggs and bread, a business increasing its contributions to their employees' medical insurance, or someone getting a job because of a small business was able to afford the services, then it will all be worth it at the end. My philosophy is that doing nothing is not an option. Yes, there are those who are concerned at the physical impact reducing the BBT will have towards the government operations, but if we don't make a serious commitment to reducing taxes, we'll never address where to cut. As a matter of fact, if we don't address this issue today, the government will continue to spend as there is no tomorrow. That the next conversation we'll have on BBT in the next few years may end up being increasing the percentage from 5% to 6%. Ladies and gentlemen, we need to start somewhere, and that somewhere is now. So today is not about what led to the BBT increase, but about hearing your stories of how the BBT impacted your business. This is about understanding what could happen if the tax rate was reduced. It is about listening to your recommendations so that this legislature body can make a sound decision on where to take this issue. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Senator Moylan. The following individuals have signed up to testify. We have Joe Arnett. We have Mr. Felix. If you please come forward and, oh, yeah, Joe. Oh, there you are, Joe. Chris, Chris Felix. We have Sid Free Nsangan. And we have Bobby. You signed up for oral testimony? And you are, sir? You didn't sign up? Oh, that's the other Bobby. Oh, okay. Gosh, it's bad when you have two. Gosh. It's bad when you have two Bobbies here. Oh, anyway, I apologize. We'll begin with Mr. Joe, and I'm going to ask all the folks testifying. We'll keep it at five, and I know you have yours written, Joe, so I know you've got it on track. I just don't want, just in case anybody else wants to testify, you can still sign up to testify, okay? We want to keep it at five minutes, and if any of my colleagues want to ask you a question, it could take more than five minutes for that. Okay? It'd be wide open. So Joe, we will begin with you, and then unfortunately, the way Chris sat at the far end, we'll just go down the line. Okay? Thank you, Ms. Arnett.
Well, thank you for this opportunity to present our support for Bill Number 9-35, which addresses a great impediment for many businesses on islands, specifically small business. The 25% increase in the business privilege tax is legislated by PL 34-87, has not only increased operational costs, but increased the cost of goods on Guam. Our organization and many others in the private sector spoke out against the BBT increase in 2018. While it was understood that the government was facing difficult financial times as a result of the federal tax cuts and the Jobs Act of 2017, the chamber provided many recommendations for the government to consider, which included cost-cutting measures as well as revenue enhancement and collection ideas, all the while emphatically advising that raising regressive taxes such as the BBT should never be the first option on the table. As the original mandate was to increase the BBT for six months in 2018, many in the business community thought this would be a brief burden to bear. However, to the business community's dismay, the 34th Legislature opted to increase the BBT to 25% indefinitely. While the increase was sustained, our government continues to operate as usual, with no plan in place to implement cost-cutting measures, nor have been, there have been other efforts by the government to reduce taxpayer spending. We believe that Bill 935 provides a benchmark for the government of Guam to embrace, as it essentially creates a nine-month timeline for rightsizing to take place. This is an opportunity for our governor to assess finances, improve collections, and take advantage of Public Law 34-87, which provides the governor complete authority to reorganize the government with the intent of saving up to $30 million without legislative authority. This also provides the 35th Guam Legislature an opportunity to find new revenue enhancement ideas and creative ways to reduce spending. The timing is right, as we need to make Guam a business-friendly environment. The 2017 Performator, which was released by the Department of Interior Office of Insular Affairs, noted that Guam has a relatively high tax burden when compared to other insular governments. This was published in 2017, prior to the BBT increase in 2018. We can only speculate that the tax burden will increase in updated reports. When taxes are increased, the cost of goods and services are increased, resulting in a higher cost of living continues for our island residents. There are detractors who claim the prices will not go down if Bill 935 is passed, is enacted, but we live in a society free of free enterprise where competition plays a factor in pricing. Many business entities that increase their prices after the BBT increase may have to reduce the cost of their goods at some point if they wish to survive in this competitive market. There are businesses that entered into contractual relationships prior to the BBT remaining at 5% on October 1st, 2018, and had no opportunity to adjust their prices. Therefore, they eating the increased operational costs, and they may even have to lower their costs for competitive purposes in the future. Increasing the BBT doesn't just hurt consumers, but many small business owners who survive off small margins. These are the coffee shops we visit, the restaurants we eat at, the consultants, the accountants, the bookkeepers, the attorneys, and other professionals we seek critical services from, including entities at the Chamal Village and other micro businesses that sell their products and services to our tourists. Many island residents attain their source of income from their small businesses, and BBT increase impacted their livelihood. The Guam Chamber of Commerce represents over 450 business members who employ over 40,000 island residents. It is time that the government live up to its support of our small business entities by rolling back the business privilege tax to 4%. In closing, the Guam Chamber of Commerce supports Bill 935 and encourages the senators of the 35th Guam Legislature to pass this legislation. We commend the author of the bill for its timely introduction. We encourage both branches of government to make necessary changes towards rightsizing the government. The Guam Chamber is always open for further dialogue and discussion on the issue. Thank you for this opportunity.
Thank you, Mr. Arnett. Wow, I've always known you to be a fast reader. You did that all in four minutes. But I like the way the letter is written. It's great. I like the last sentence. Actually, the last two sentences, what I like the most. Mr. Nsangan, you've got five minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My name is Sid Free Nsangan. Yes, I support this bill because there's a misconception. I believe that the small business owners are just paying GRT. Well, here's the scenario and the facts. We're not only paying 4% GRT, but we are revenue creator for the government of Guam. We hire workers, and they became productive citizens. We also pay workers' compensation insurance, which pay for the salary of the insurance workers. We pay for the rent of the building, lease of the land. In return, the renter and the lessor pay another 5% GRT to the government. Now, we also pay bill, additional bill. So many bills, like power, water, water bill because of creating a business, and this revenue paid for the salary of the GPA and GWA workers. Now, we pay for the telephone also, the internet, which also pay for the salary of the GTA workers. We consume a lot of gas. We repair the building. We buy equipment, office supplies, advertise, which contribute to the economy or to the salary also of the advertisement company. We pay income tax, those that are making money out of the business. Even they don't pay income tax, they still create revenue for the government. And there are other lease, it continued to go on, that the business owner contribute to the government of Guam because almost 85% of the revenue comes from the business owners. Now, I will not support this bill if the administration will stick to their platform to be fiscally responsible. But how could they be fiscally responsible when the salary of the staff, directors, deputy directors are so high, and this GRT is being, it is being passed to the small business owner to shoulder their big salary, like director for 167,000, 147,000, deputy director 143,000, and their experience is only campaigning hard for their governor. You know, that's my grievance, grievances. And you cannot just reason out that, hey, the previous administration, they are doing the same. They're paying the same salary. That's why they were voted out by the people. You know, you cannot compare the salary from the mainland. They have big economy. They have big revenue. Where can you find a senator getting only 55,000, and then the director, deputy director getting 167,000, 147,000? You know, that's just my piece, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. The other Bobby.
Buenos dias, honorable senators of our 35th legislature. My name is Bobby Sashif. I'm the current Guam Association of Realtors president. I appreciate the opportunity to be able to provide my oral testimony on behalf of the Guam Association of Realtors. Over the past year, we as Realtors and as community members of our beautiful island have seen several changes in our economy that were initiated by our local and federal government. Many of these issues affect our real estate industry, our community, and our livelihoods. Guam Association of Realtors and its 485 members strongly support the passage of Bill 9-35, which seeks to reduce the business privilege tax rate from 5% to 4%. The statement of legislative finding and intent is on point when it asserts that the increase of 1% in the BBT rate originally a temporary measure to allow Gov Guam to deal with reduced tax collections due to the federal tax cuts and Job Acts of 2017, but then made indefinite but then made indefinite by Public Law 34-116, penalizes our island business, residents, and the government of Guam across all business transactions. The tax increase perpetrated on our citizenry was made permanent so as to have all three branches of our government simply avoid enacting and/or executing cost-cutting measures, eliminating profligate spending on nonessential government programs, and exercising fiscal responsibility. If this was the true intent of the increase in the first place, then the fact that the government of Guam fiscal 2019 budget was developed and passed based on the 1% BBT tax increase surely indicates that the government is establishing a new normal and punitive taxation, not the same intent of keeping BBT increase a temporary measure. Bill 9-35 seeks to restore fiscal responsibility to our government beginning in fiscal year 2020. To reiterate our position, GAAR strongly supports the passage of Bill 9-35, which will revert the BBT rate to 4%. This would in large benefit many of our community members. We are focused on working with you, our elected leaders, to ensure continued trust and commitment with the Guam Association of Realtors. So your responsibility.
Thank you. Thank you, Bobby. I'd like to also recognize two of my colleagues that have joined us, Senator Jose Pedro Terlay and Senator Kelly Marsh Titan. Mr. Felix, before you speak, I'd like to ask two other individuals to join us on the table, join you on the table, Mr. John Ujowa and Mary Rhodes. Is Mary, is Mary here, or? Okay, come on up, Mary. Mr. Felix, sir.
Thank you, Senator, Chairman, and honorable senators. I'm Chris Felix, Christopher Felix. I have a real estate company on Guam, Century 21 Realty Management. I don't want to, I'm speaking in favor of the Bill 9-35. I don't want to reiterate what Chairman Joe and President Bobby have already stated. I just wanted to remind the senators and a lot of people who don't think, a lot of people who are not in business think an increase from 4% to 5% is a 1% increase. From a business standpoint, from my standpoint, and as Joe mentioned, for us, it's a 25% increase. To go from 4% to 5% is a 25% increase in our costs and in our taxes, and that's a lot of money to bear. We ate it. We swallowed it with the understanding it was six months, and then it changed on us. We'd like you to consider rolling back to where it was, the commitments that were made to us under the last legislature. Thank you so much.
Thank you, sir. Mr. John.
Thank you, senators. So my name is John Ujowa from National Association of Insurance and Financial Advisors, Marianas. We are the Insurance and Financial Advisor Association, the local chapter of a nationwide organization. And our insurance and financial advisors, and often it crosses over into the tax and accounting world. We represent pretty much almost every business and consumer and household on Guam because we're taking care of their insurance for their personal lives, their business lives, and we're taking care of their investments and retirements for their companies as well as for their households. So we do have a grassroots understanding of how this drastically impacts, and there was a lot of similar points that our testimony makes that was already covered by the, by the table here, the panel here. So I just want to also point out a couple of things. When, when, like Mr. Felix mentioned, for business owners, this is a 25% increase, and so if you're a business owner, you don't have the luxury of anyone passing any bill to prop you up. You either have to sell more, you have to get a loan, or you have to go into personal debt, maybe, you know, borrowing from friends and family. So that means either employees will be terminated, or employees will have less hours, or health benefits will be cut, retirement benefits will be cut. So these are the real amplifications when a business owner is faced with a 25% increase in anything. Oftentimes, there's fierce competition, especially at the micro business and small business and medium-sized business level. So there's, you know, you can't grow a market artificially overnight, and like Joe Arnett and Guam Chamber and other Chamber experts and economists have been speaking about over the last year, the economy's flat. It's been flat for the last five years. If we have an amazing military buildup stimulus, and that's kind of like the winds are in our favor, the current is in our favor, and yet the economy's flat, you know, what's going to happen when those favorable economic stimulus stimuli are turned off? So now's the time to prepare our government, our businesses, and our households for responsibility and for allowing them to save and get ahead, not just tread above water, but to get ahead. Because in any natural economic cycle, when things turn down, it's unpredictable. It's for an unknown amount of time, and you've got to have a little cushion to survive those times. So a lot of our testimony, you guys have copy, but a lot of our testimony made, other individuals and organizations made similar comments. So I just want to point that out. And lastly, two other items. So Gov Guam is also a consumer of goods and services. So if Gov Guam has to procure products and services at 25% higher price, I feel that's not in our island's best interest. And finally, the market is survival of the fittest, so businesses will either go under So businesses will either go under or they'll, they'll barely survive. And then consumers will probably be going to internet purchases more versus just buying local. You know, when you're living check-to-check, you have to find a way to afford what you normally need. We know that there's a, the cost of healthcare is ever increasing. Real estate, you know, rents and mortgages, that price goes up, is, has already increased in the last couple of years. And then, you know, products and services also increasing. We know, you know, power and water, the price of those rates have increased. These aren't luxuries, these aren't items that you can do without. You do need healthcare, you do need a roof over your head, you do need your power and your water. And you need your basic items to run your household as well as your business. So these aren't an increase in prices of luxury goods. This is an increase in prices of pretty much everything. So you can't cut costs, you can't tighten your belt to survive that increase. There's, it's a pinch. So that's just something I also want the, you know, our lawmakers to be aware of. And NAFA Marianas and other organizations, we are aware that it was a drastic measure at a critical time to help GMH. That's a very, very good cause. So yes, we did the short-term solution now, the short-term Band-Aid. Now let's look at a real long-term, fiscally sound solution. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Joah. Ms. Rhodes, Mary.
Hafedé and Buenos, everybody. Thank you. On behalf of the Guam Hotel and Restaurant Association, I'd like to formally introduce, for those who don't know, my name is Mary Rhodes. I'm the president for GHRA. I've been there thirteen years. And we appreciate the opportunity to provide input and support for Bill nine dash thirty-five, which is an act to repeal Section Two of Public Law thirty-four dash one sixteen relative to reducing the business privilege tax from five percent back to four percent. So exactly a year ago today, on July sixteenth, two thousand eighteen, the Guam Legislature held its fourth public hearing on its fourth bill to increase taxes because of the crisis that was shared within the administration and at the legislature. Although the intent of that tax increase specifically to the business privilege tax was a temporary fix to the perennial budget shortfall, the people of Guam continue to see the government of Guam not living within its means and not right-sizeing government. That temporary tax increase was extended with the disapproval of the business community. And the administration continues to overspend even with the increases in revenues. So we're supposed to be getting five million more per month. That's sixty more, sixty million dollars a year, but yet we're still in a deficit. That is not good for Guam, and we don't understand why you can continue to not live within your means. Before considering any increases to taxes, GHRA has always strongly expressed that the government needs to have a balanced approach and focus on implementing cost containment and savings measures, collecting outstanding tax revenues, enforcing existing laws that generate revenues, and looking at other broad-based taxes, which will, which really overall, I think Guam needs to look at its overall tax structure on how all of the taxes relate to the revenues and how they're being spent. So any increases will actually be counterproductive and result in so many things that will impact our economy. So we've heard of the cost of goods, we've heard of it not being a business-friendly environment. I know that these things are what a lot of people say, we, this is our way to cry out that the sky is falling? Well, that's only a metaphor, right? That's only a saying. But we are representing the business community. GHRA represents more than three hundred members, employs more than twenty thousand people, and we contribute more than two hundred and sixty million dollars in taxes. So when you start impacting taxes or any costs like fees or permits or licenses, it really impacts not just the business community, but the employees within the community, the ability to maintain jobs, the ability to keep costs at a competitive price. And so there are a lot of examples, which we've shared over the years, of how this has been detrimental to the government of Guam. And we're still not addressing the real problems. So I know that it was done on behalf of GMH and for our new senators. If you didn't pay attention to what was happening last year, it was months and months of different testimonies on both sides where issues regarding GMH, I would leave, I won't have, I won't give an opinion on that, but it was not a pleasant sight to see exactly just how problematic our government is. So I know it's already been said, but there is an overall impact to our business community, but especially our tourism industry. Our hotels have contractors with wholesalers in advance, which could be for one year to eighteen months. And those rates are negotiated, and which has already been stated by this group, that majority of those contracts did not receive any price adjustments because we all understood it was supposed to be a temporary fix. And then when it was extended, it was only supposed to be through the end of the year, and the government was supposed to live up to the budget requirements that this legislative body placed on the government entities, which included not having deputy managers and so many other things that didn't, weren't followed through. So with the fact that we aren't able to set prices within a specific period, the government should also not change prices arbitrarily to the business community. It's important that we preface our desire for a balanced approach with the many proposals that we've seen over the last year, especially to tax increase, with understanding what's happening to our economy and our market. With my testimony, I'm going to forward to all of our senators a copy of GBB's Economic Impact Study that was conducted last year by a third party. And it will show you the effect that it has or will have with not just any increases to the different types of taxes that were introduced last year with, including BPT, a sales tax, or even hotel occupancy tax. And I think that's important because this legislative body continues to make decisions without any real data. And I think it's important that you review GBB's data and understand how it's going to impact your largest business industry. Really, over the last two years, we've seen seismic shifts within the tourism industry. We've seen so many of our market share go down. And where we've seen increases like Korea and Taiwan, currently, those markets are down this year. And so we really need to pay attention to those market indicators when we're making these kinds of decisions. I have a very long testimony, as you guys always know, so I'm only highlighting certain areas. So although we see growth in arrivals reported by GBB, we need to know that we're continually decreasing our market share in total outbound travel, and the spending has really reduced in some areas. But arrivals really remained flat at point-three percent over the last year. And as also indicated by this panel, our economy has also remained flat. So those are two huge market indicators that we really need to understand because although we're seeing increase in taxes, well, we've also had to adjust pricing. And so anytime you start dealing with additional fees or increases, businesses will right-size and adjust to those market conditions. And so it's already very challenging for all of us. And I think that this legislative body needs to be very concerned about the changes taking place in the tourism industry because it will prevent the government of Guam to really start forecasting, if that's already being done or not, but really forecasting for the next five years. And GBB will be putting together another five-year strategic plan. But what we need to remember, Guam is less competitive with our pricing strategies in the market within Asia. We deal with expensive airfare to Guam. We deal with being a U.S. market in an international market, which is increased in pricing. We have challenges with being able to compete with labor, goods, and services. So overall, we cannot afford to continue to increase taxes on Guam. We need to look at growth, which requires additional investments to develop our destination, improve our product and our overall service offerings. So we really need to support our business community because that is where your taxes come from, which really drive this, not just our economy, but pays for the government of Guam. So thank you very much, and I will be providing you the full testimony with the study.
Please do. We have nobody else that signed up to testify? We have? Oh. Okay, well, Ms. Duennas, I have no problem, Ms. Duennas. You got five minutes?
I'm Ms. Duennas, and I'm one of the small business owners. And I want to thank Senator Moylan for introducing this bill. Because we as small owners, as many have reiterated, we have fixed costs. I represent Mescla, I'd like to testify in favor of Mescla, Remax Diamond Realty, and also Duennas Camacho and Associates. So Mescla has four restaurants, and they've got fixed costs. So when you, they set up their menus, they have their employees. When things go up within the government, it does affect our small businesses, as everyone in this room have said. It's a little different when we're a small businesses. Our costs keep going up, but then we can increase some of our prices because they've been fixed. As business owners, when, when there's a budget crunch, what do we do? We get rid of employees, we have to lay them off, we have to raise our prices. What is the government doing? I mean, is increasing across the board to affect private business owners the best way to do it? It really does not just impact us, it impacts tourism, it impacts our private owners, it impacts everybody on this island. And if we're making cuts to fit our budget, what is the government doing? I mean, I appreciate the fact that you're rolling this down, and I hope you pass it because so many businesses are affected. I mean, there's nothing we can do other than cut on our side. And again, I want to reiterate, our prices are going up, we've got fixed expenses. And then who takes the cut? We have to cut our profits. So if we're taking a cut, I think the government should look at their expenses because the government isn't cutting. And I think everybody in this room can attest to that. We take our cuts. Where is the government going to start taking some responsibility in making those cuts? I hear about salaries, you know, come on. We're all in it together, let's make our island a better place. And the only way to do it, to be fiscally responsible. And I support the bill on behalf of our small businesses. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Duennas. Kathy, are you going to give any testimony? You didn't sign up for testimony?
No, I didn't, sir.
That's why I wanted to ask you.
I'm here to support my chairman, sir.
Okay, because we have Mr. Jones, if you could please join us. Jeff Jones, you signed up for testimony, sir?
Good morning.
And as all the panels that testified earlier, please don't leave so that my colleagues would like to ask questions, sir.
Good morning.
Morning.
As most of my colleagues have testified that a GRT increase hurts everybody, I have a little different take on it from a retail point of view. And I'll read my testimony, then elaborate. Thank you for the opportunity to present my support for Bill number nine thirty-five. Since the BPT increase, our company has paid over five hundred thousand additional BP taxes to the government of Guam. While some may see that as a good thing because it increases the government revenue, you have to understand that those funds did not come from Triple J, rather, they came from the people of Guam. You see, every time the government raises taxes, businesses increase their prices, or those who can't increase it do so to compensate for the increased tax, and the consumer ends up paying it. The BPT tax is the most regressive tax for low-income families because it represents a larger percentage of their household income. And it is added to everything they consume, all of their basic necessities, food, transportation, housing, clothing, it costs more because of the BPT. Recently, this legislature had a public hearing on a bill to raise the minimum wage. The justification was to help those in entry-level jobs to earn a living wage. While the argument is honorable, it is also disingenuous to raise the minimum wage and at the same time leave the BPT at five percent when the original increase was only supposed to be for six months. A return of the BPT to its original four percent rate would not only benefit all consumers on Guam, but it would benefit minimum wage earners and low-income households more based on their income. In some of our businesses, we're able to raise our prices right away. In others, we have to maintain contract prices. And so in those businesses that we can raise a price, of course, we do because we can't, our margins are not big enough to be able to absorb that GRT increase. And I think that most small businesses, if they can raise their prices, they can. If you're in a competitive environment where the price is very competitive, then as many of my colleagues testify, you have to absorb that. So it's a, it's a very difficult scenario. But I think, as we have shared previously, is that I think the most important thing to understand is that when we were here a year ago, it was supposed to be a temporary increase, and it's not temporary. It's been a year. So that's all I have to say. I'd be happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. We will begin questions first from the author of the bill. Do you have, or if you want, Senator James, you can be towards the end. We'll start with Senator Therese Terlay. Ma'am, do you have any questions at this point? If not, I can come back to you. Okay, Senator Tello?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and good morning, everyone. Thank you for being here. There is a question that I was asked to ask the panel here. I didn't support the increase in the tax increase, but I was in a senator at the time. However, there is a question that's important to ask, and I do support this bill. However, this question is to you, Joe, since you are the chamber president. Since the time this was increased, the tax was increased from four percent to five percent, did you see many of your businesses under the chamber raise their prices when this happened?
If I understood you correctly, you want to know if businesses raised their prices when you raised the GRT? I think those that, I think those that could, did. I think those that couldn't, did not. As, as Mr. Jones pointed out, it's a matter of competitive pressures. As he says, most businesses don't operate on huge margins. So when you, when you have a twenty-five percent increase in the BBT like you did, that comes right off the bottom line. So you're not able to invest, you're not able to expand your business. And actually, the BBT is, we keep saying it's a regressive tax. And, and it is, the income tax is progressive. The higher your income, the more you pay in terms of rate. But BBT doesn't work that way. The smaller your income, the higher percentage of your income goes to BBT. Not only that, it's not visible. This legislatures in the past have prevented businesses from putting the BBT on the invoice. So it's not even transparent. So yes, in answer to your question, I think those who can, can in terms, but based upon competitive pressures, do. Because we just pass it on, it's a cost of doing business, we pass on. And not only do we have to pass it on, we have to, we have to pay BBT on the BBT that we pass on. So the gross-up in the BBT for a business is closer to five-point-four percent rather than five percent.
Thank you, Joe, for that. But so, that being said, if this legislature were to appeal and roll back the BBT to four percent, will these businesses also lower their prices?
I think over time, they'll have no choice because competitors will reduce their prices. Anybody who can get a competitive advantage and increase their gross income will do it so it can drop more profits on the bottom line. You won't see it immediately, but you'll see it over time.
Thank you, Joe. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Senator Pito Terlay, you have me? Yes, go for it.
I just want to thank each and every one of you for sharing this wonderful moment with all of us. And you know, from, from the testimony that has been presented, I guess all of them, a hundred percent of them are legit. So I just want to thank each and every one of you for being here today. Thank you.
Senator Kelly. Senator Kelly?
Hafideh and Sujusmaasi, to everyone for coming out here. It's so important to hear testimony, to hear from on-the-ground experiences and people that are trying to look at a big picture, at least within their industries or for the greater economy. And certainly, it's very complex. There are many different aspects to it, so I think the more, as you were saying, the more that we look at studies, the more that we're looking at data, the clearer the picture is going to be for us. And so definitely, I need to be continuing to look for those studies and be developing an understanding of that information. So that I'm, I'm coming at this, or I'm approaching this, understanding it to the best of my ability. Some of what I think is important to think about in all of this, you had mentioned government rightsizing. At this point, you know, what does that mean? But it is an important consideration, consumer behavior is definitely important. How are we supporting our own businesses? And how are we keeping the money here so that it's continuing to circulate amongst us? I think that those are all issues that we need to look at. This is something that needs a multi-pronged approach. I do think that increasing tax rates should be looked at as a last resort, but I think we need to look at this in that multifaceted way to understand how we can all be supporting each other and all be helping strengthen each other. With that, I had a couple of questions. And these may be directed more at, at the author of the bill, who may be able to provide some of that data that came across my mind as needing to be part of this consideration. So trying to find where I wrote that question, but one of them is, notwithstanding the intent of the measure, where, where does Guam rank in the nation on issues like taxes such as our BBT tax? So if the author perhaps, or maybe somebody at the table has that information?
Senator, on into the panel, the question will be posed to the panel.
Right, so perhaps for the chamber, is there an understanding of where we rank amongst the nation in, in our BBT? Is it at the high end? Is it kind of along the same lines as others, if, if you could address that?
Actually, there's only one other state that has a grocery receipts tax. There's only one state, it's New Mexico. And so the comparison wouldn't be exact. The other thing is, across, across economies, the rates are determined by the level of activity in the economy and how much the economy can absorb. I understand you like to raise revenue by increasing taxes, but the point should be to increase revenue, period. Give the, give the business community the ability to expand their business, and your tax base will expand. To artificially increase the tax base without an increase in activity only drives the taxes down on a net basis. And so the comparisons are difficult to make. Obviously, as I said, we have one of the highest standard costs of living among all the, among all the trust territory, among all the territories under the flag. And for several reasons, our location is a big part of that. But so we, so to be mindful to expand the economy, we need to do it in a systematic way. And I think you need to go back and renew the promise that was made when the BBT was raised. And that is to look at the expenses of the government. You have the luxury of setting, spending money any way you want, but businesses don't have that advantage. So we would like to see some work together. If you want to increase taxes, let's discuss it, but let's also talk about what you're doing when you spend it.
So Sujusmaasi, for that understanding that New Mexico has that grocery receipts tax, so that gives me an area to be looking at, to be looking at the issue of, I believe most states have some form of sales tax and other issues, just to help understand this within that larger context. And I'm glad that you brought up the issue of territories. I think that's another area we could be looking at, or we should be looking at. How are the other territories dealing with some of these issues? We all know it's, we, we deal with a higher cost of living in many ways because of our location, because we are territories, because we're outside of the national system in many ways, geographically and otherwise. So your, your answer has helped me continue figure areas to, to look at to better understand this full context and understand what makes the most sense for Guam. So I, I think that's really the only question I had at this point. But I do recognize that each of you touched on different issues, and I think that that was really important, to hear that different aspect from, from each of you. And altogether, I think it provided quite a bit of information that covered quite a few bases. So Sujusmaasi for that.
Senator Lee?
Sujusmaasi, Mr. Chair, and I don't have any questions for the panel, but I do want to take the time to thank you for taking your time to provide us with testimony on this measure and hopefully others that are on our agenda today. And for all those who didn't provide testimony today, thank you for showing up and for participating in our process. It's really important for us as policymakers to constantly be hearing feedback from the community on the bills that we have introduced and that we're having hearings on. I was also here last term, and we heard from many of the business community members. So we thank you for coming out time and again to continue to provide us with your feedback on the measures that we're looking at introducing and potentially passing from this body. So thank you very much for the time and for the information.
Senator Terlei, hold on, Senator Titigui, the other senator has to speak for us, Senator Terlei.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you all for being here this morning. It's very significant that there's so many of you, and thank you all for your testimony. I think all of you hit on different things, and thank you for doing the research necessary also to present to us. I, I think that's going to help. When, when the BPT increases were presented before the legislature, I voted no on those. And when the, the budget bill came in again to, well, the BPT was increased as part of a bill to also establish a sales tax. And that ended up, you know, being repealed later. But when the, the budget bill came in again to repeal the sunset provision for the increased BPT, you know, I also voted no on that. I even tried to put an amendment in on the floor that would sunset it at the end of September 2019. But that failed, it had seven votes, so it was close, but it failed. But, but I agree with those who have said that, yeah, the, the tax is concerning because of the impact to families especially. And, and that at the time, we were trying to ensure that the government was going to increase its collections. We kept talking about collections and collections and collections. And I think we, I for one, wanted to keep that pressure on the government to ensure that it was going to come through with, you know, some results in increasing collections and decreasing the spending as promised. And in that same budget bill where they removed the sunset provision for the GPT, they did make, I think, drastic cuts to spending. And that were supposed to go through the fiscal year 2019. But, but I agree with you, Mr. LaSangan, that it's hard to see that sometimes when you see what's, what's being spent in the government right now, right? We see salaries, we see positions that are being filled that were, where we thought on freeze because of a crisis that we were in. So, so I just think, I agree with you, the government, we need to be very much more consistent with what we are aiming to do and what we are actually doing and, and why we are doing it. And, and we can't have all those things. We can't increase spending and increase tax. I think we need to reverse both. But I did, I did want to note, when I reviewed the CRR, so the BPT increase did bring in significant increase of revenues. However, there has been a significant decrease in revenues in the corporation taxes. And I think these are the results of the tax jobs and cuts. But so like for the one I'm looking at now, if it's comparing fiscal year 2018 to fiscal year 2019, and it shows at the month, as of the month ending May 2019, it shows a $35 million decrease in the corporation taxes overall, and a $43 million increase in the BPT. So I just wanted to put that out there. And I know that there was a bill recently also to decrease BPT for certain small businesses, at least for a portion of, of that BPT, up to a certain cap. But I guess the, one of the arguments that was being made back then was that if, if the corporation taxes were being cut, businesses would be able to absorb this BPT. What, did any of you have any comment on that?
I think that, that, that holds true if you're making money. So you have to make money in order to save money on the, on the income tax, right, for businesses. A lot of businesses are break even, so they don't participate in those savings. But they still have to pay the GRT. I think that's the important thing to understand, is the, the Trump tax cut only works for you if you're making money. Because it's on income, so.
All right, I, that sounds fair, except that, yeah, we're, we're seeing $35 million.
Yeah, I think some, for sure, some people benefited, but not all the business community, I think.
All right, thank you very much, thank you, Mr. Chair, thank you to the panel.
Senators, can I, can I put this in numerical real terms? So for example, if something costs a dollar, it now costs a dollar 25. If something costs $10, it now costs $12.50. A $100 item is now $125. Now let's use an example of a hotel rental, or a hotel room, or a car rental. You're gonna, if your budget is a hundred dollars and there's a three-night stay or a three-day, you know, car rental, that's $300 versus $375. So that, that's, that's quite an increase. You know, a $1,000 item is now $1,250. So to, to look at it in terms of the actual real price increase, that it's 25%, that's very, very significant. And if it's based on household necessities and items that you, you need to, to run your home and also to run your business, you will feel that impact significantly. And some real consequences would be employees suffer, businesses suffer.
Thank you, Senator Castro?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a follow-up comment to Ms. Rhodes' earlier testimony. I'd like to extend an invitation, and any of my colleagues are welcome. I want a specific discussion, if I, if I could have that with you and members from your industry, along the lines of how the increase affected those industries that are specifically tied to foreign economies. And I appreciate the earlier comment by Mr. Yehjoa, but I think it would be much more fruitful for folks like myself if I can get you in a room and get those specific examples. So that when the bill does hit the floor, we can provide that kind of supporting data and case study. So if you would, Ms. Rhodes, people like Mr. Joe Blas, I'll be sending a letter to follow up, and if you could be providing that specific information, I would appreciate it, thank you so much.
Thank you, Senator Castro. Now Senator Titigui.
Good thing we're related. Sorry, Joe, I had one more question. And, and I appreciate how everybody here was talking about cutting government spending as well. I have a bill that's coming up, actually, is going to cut government spending. So I hope you can stick around for that and support that bill. But my question is with regards to sales tax. Does the chamber feel that we should change the verbiage of GRT to sales tax?
Oh yeah, the chamber has a stated position as opposed to GRT to, to, as we, as we proposed when, when the temporary increase was approved, that was supposed to roll into a sales tax. The, the advantage of, of that is it broadens the tax base. And it also is visible, so that when consumers purchase goods, they see how much they're paying for the good itself and how much they're paying in taxes, because that's on the invoice.
Thank you, and the same question goes to Mary.
I guess I should just answer your question, I was going to respond to Will real quick. But I think the same goes with what Joe had mentioned. I think that you're gonna, so here's a way to answer both. You have to remember that the tourism industry, yes, although it makes up 60% of the gross domestic product, we are not just hotels, we are representative of the entire business community that does businesses with, within tourism. And so you have to kind of really look at the larger economy, being that we are 60% of it. With regards to even foreign national companies, I think you'll find less of that now, these days, especially with companies that have chosen to be here. And not all of them have qualifying certificates, there's only actually four left. But there are a lot of other industries here on Guam, and I think that, I would like to break that myth that we continue to target one specific industry, because you have to look at the total economy. Majority of the businesses here on Guam are small businesses. And that's really at the heart of what, every time you, you make these kinds of decisions, that's who you're truly impacting. Yes, larger businesses have greater margins, so not great margins, but more flexibility in how they can do things. They can reduce staff much easier than a small business. There are ways that they can cut down expenses. So I think we have to be very careful when we start targeting certain industries, because I'd like to push that back to you, Senator Castro, in the fact that it shouldn't just be tourism, it should be all businesses. But while you're doing that, you should bring in GITA and REVEN tax, and you should have a real honest discussion on whether or not, you know, we even have that data on foreign national companies. Because I can tell you right now, in certain types of businesses, that's a really difficult question for a REVEN tax to answer. So just overall, I think we all agree on those same points. But with regards to sales tax, again, I will share with you the study from GBB. They, the, the third-party study does talk about, while you're looking to increase either cost of consumer goods and services with business privilege tax or a hotel occupancy tax, or introduce a sales tax, you will ultimately decrease spending, which we've already seen on Guam. Because if you haven't paid attention, that retail has actually decreased over years in how much actually people are spending on Guam. They're not buying the packaged goods, packaged tours that they used to buy wholesale in the 80s, 90s, and early 2000s. They're buying smaller segments, just airline and hotel. And so consumer spending is something that I think we all forget to look at, the Consumer Price Index and consumer spending, and even inflation, and all of those things that we really should be looking at whenever you increase anything within the tax structure. And I don't think we ever have those conversations. So again, we've been asking for over a year to have those roundtable discussions or very fruitful conversations, but invite those agencies that are responsible for enforcing the rules and collecting on those taxes and fees. And so I, I would like to have that discussion with Chamber and, you know, Guam Association Realtors, Guam Contractors Association, but we need to have those government agencies there as well. And with the data that they need to provide, so you can make educated decisions.
Mr. Chairman?
Stand by, hold on, I'll, I'll call you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, I'm done, thank you so much.
You, you wanted a comment on it, on something?
Have you responded to Senator Titigui?
I have responded to Senator Taitye's question regarding G R T.
Okay, well, Senator Castro, close on Ms. Rhodes, okay? And then I'll call you up.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Rhodes. That would be my point exactly, you know? I'm not necessarily looking at just the hotels, I'm looking at the affiliated establishments, such as the restaurants, or car rentals, or service providers, people who provide jet ski services, or other types of services, that are affected, because you're, as somebody mentioned earlier, you're pre-negotiating some of these packages with foreign economies. And so that would be the point of my inquiry, and I'd like to close, Mr. Chairman. I hope that at all times, we're always honest in our deliberations, so thank you so much.
Okay, Senator Castro. Sir?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Senator Taitye, in L.A., other counties only charge 7%, and their economy is much bigger than Guam. It's only a difference of 2%. Now, Government Accountability Office have findings that one of the problems in Guam is how to identify people and companies that are not paying taxes. That's one of their findings. And if this one will be fixed, then it will add another revenue for the government. In return, you don't need to increase the taxes or other fees. At the same time, I believe the government should tax all the gambling activities in Guam, whether it's nonprofit or profit. That's all, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. The author? Senator Jim, do you have anything you want to say before I ask the final questions and close it?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It's just a brief, we, do you have one written testimony, the person was not able to attend, but if I may just briefly read a few paragraphs, very short. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good morning, my name is Jerry Polino, a small business owner of several businesses employing approximately 53 full-time and part-time employees. As a provider for bookkeeping, payroll, and tax services for more than 800 clients, I would like to share some of my sentiments. My constituents and I have regarding proposal of the Bill 9-35 to reduce the business privilege tax from 5% to 4%. In the past several years, I was fortunate enough to work intimately with a number of small business owners, seeking ways to maximize profits and minimize tax burdens through proper planning. We have seen increases, increasing changes in the regulatory requirements on businesses, increasing cost of goods, and a wave of negative vibes against business supported by various groups and organizations. There is a misconception by the general public that business owners are well-to-do, and they retain a large portion of their income as profits. The reality is, most small business owners are struggling to make ends meet. Small business owners wrestle with cash flow issues daily, in addition to the inability to balance its timely collections while working to meet its full payroll obligations, vendor payments, and tax obligations. Since the passage and implementation of the new grocery receipts tax of 5% almost a year ago, it has become apparent that the time spent in operations by small business owners increased approximately 20%. Dedicating more hours to the business and less family time puts an added stress on family-owned businesses. Missing family functions and special occasions are common occurrences amongst many small business owners. Small business owners work with tighter budgets and smaller margins. Any upward adjustments on costs have a greater impact on smaller companies' margins. The proposed adjustment in grocery receipts tax from 5% to 4% is welcoming news for the typical small business owner. They would take whatever savings they can to conjure up, to provide for their family, and remain competitive. With the rising cost of doing business on Guam, many small business owners are contemplating closing shop or looking for other opportunities elsewhere. What may be meniscal change in tax burden has a profound effect on many small businesses. People operating in service business sector experience the greatest effect in any change in tax rates. Unlike the construction sector, which the prime pays for the grocery receipts tax, the service sector observes the tax rate changes in every level. Whether you're the prime contractor, subcontractor, or subcontractor of the subcontractor, everyone pays their share of grocery receipts tax. I present you with concerns from real people, with real situations. I do not rely on surveys, nor do I rely on gut feeling. These sentiments were shared by people I worked closely with. Because of their affiliation and sensitivity to the topic, and the fear of any retaliation resulting from this hearing, they have elected to sit back and hope that my testimony didn't fall on deaf ears. I hope that this testimony shed some light on some of the difficulties and burden that businesses' owners endure every day. They are the silent majority. Please keep them in business. Keep the Guamanian dream going. Encourage ownership. Once we lose the will, the courage, and the drive to succeed, we will lose the main force that makes Guam a great place to live. We must protect the very core of life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. Thank you very much for this opportunity to present testimony. Sincerely yours, Jerry Polino. Mr. Chairman, I also like to thank all present here today, and those that also provided the testimony, and especially those that have presented themselves today. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Senator Moynihan. I just have a couple of questions. Joe, with the Chamber of Commerce, if we were to add the G R T on the receipts, and the people of Guam can see exactly what they're paying for, you would support that? The chamber would support that?
Yes.
Good, that's welcoming news. My next statement, my next question is, being that last year, when the B P T increase was supposed to be temporary, this bill today states that it'd be effective in 2019, which is, I don't think is very realistic, trying to put a budget together for the government of Guam. If it was going to affect in 2020, what would your stand be? And I see how John's shaking his head. It's planning to do it. It's like what you wrote in your statement, right sizing the government. Things got to be planned out. I know that's what you all do in business. And if it's planned out and phased in, then everybody's got to get in check. And remember last year, you were with the Tax Commission with me, and we were, I was pursuing the sales tax. And I would have no hesitation in bringing that bill back in, but we just have to tweak it, so that it doesn't put a burden on the people of Guam any more than the businesses, and that it works its way where the B P T starts going down, not staying at five. In other words, if there was a sales tax introduced, it wouldn't be two like it was last year, it'll be a 1% sales tax. Am I correct? So it'd be consistent with what you guys are asking for.
Yes. Yeah, we'd want a reduction, we'd think, over time, with the reduction, the economy will span at a quicker rate, and therefore the revenues will be neutral. But you're right, if we can't get it today, we'll work with you on getting it tomorrow.
I like how your president is shaking her head, too. Thank you, Kathy. Thank you, Joe. There being, there's no one else that is here to testify in reference to Bill 9. The committee will conclude the public hearing on Bill 9-35 L.S. The committee will continue to receive testimony for the next 10 days. Please address your written testimony to the Committee on General Government Operation Appropriation Housing, and submit it via email to senatorjoessenoxin@gmail.com. Cheers, Marcy, for your attendance today, ladies and gentlemen, and participating in today's hearing. And for those at home, thank you for watching. Thank you. We will now proceed to, we'll give it five minutes, and then we will go into Bill 10, okay? 10 minutes, I mean, five minutes, and then we'll proceed to Bill 10.
Good morning. We will now proceed with Bill Number... Bo- Bob- Bobby. Thank you, Bobby. We will now proceed to Bill Number 10-35 LS, introduced by Senator Jim Moylan. Sir, Senator Moylan, would you like to have your op- your opening statement?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Bill Number 10-35 is an act to amend subsection 26403 of Article 4, Chapter 26, Division 2, Title 11 Guam Code Annotated, relative to reducing the rate of the liquid fuel tax by .4 cents per gallon effective October 1st, 2019. Just as the BBT tax increase made an impact on business operations, when the previous legislature opted to increase the liquid fuel tax, the consumers on Guam experienced a rise in gasoline cost. The concern at the time the tax was increased was that not enough of high- not enough of the highway funds where the liquid fuel tax is deposited were being spent on the road repairs. So instead of figuring out how to reduce or remove the non-road repair expenses of the highway fund, the option passed instead was to increase the liquid fuel tax. Earlier this year, we had introduced Bill 19, which was designed to be similar to two other measures passed in previous legislature, which prevented unauthorized transfers from taking place. In the case of the legislation, our goal was to protect the highway fund, but unfortunately, that measure failed. Today, we are here to hear from you on this issue, just as with Bill 9, which we discussed earlier. If we decide to put the issue aside, the amount of liquid fuel tax will permanently remain at its current level. The government needs to do its part to spend your taxpayer dollars diligently, and this includes assuring that accounts such as the highway fund are used for road repairs. This issue is more than just about what the government needs to do. It's about what we pay at the gas pumps. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. Before I call up the only signee... Well, I'll just call him up now, Ted. Mr. Sit, um, correction, Sit Linsangan. Please have a seat, but hold off on speaking. I'd like to also advise the, our listeners and our watchers, the senators that are currently with, with me on the, on this hearing. I have Senators Regine Beskow Lee to my right. I have Senator Will Cash to my left. I have Senator Telo Titigui, the sponsor, the author of the bill, Senator Jim Moylan, and Senator Therese Terlay. I think most of you were here when I advised you of the conduct, the general rules for public hearings, so I'll go ahead and skip that. Mr. Linsangan, I ask you to please have a seat, sir, because you're going to speak. And you have the floor, sir. Try to keep it within five minutes, if you could, please. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. My name is Siedri Linsangan. Yes, I support this bill because I believe last year we had problem with roads. That's why the past legislature passed this bill to raise the liquid fuel tax. It has already served its, its purpose, so it's, it's the right time that liquid fuel tax be reduced. And I would like to thank Senator Moylan for this, for this bill. Because the people that will be, that will benefit on this bill is, are the working families. It might be too small for, for some people, but to working families, to single mom especially, single dad, making minimum wage and just low salary, this is savings for them. It will support the underprivileged, the indigent, and generally, the people of Guam. Well, but that's not the only issue here, senators. You know, like almost four years ago or five years, I, I filed a complaint with the AG's office because the receipt that I'm getting from the gas company does not reflect the, what is indicated on the gas pump. The receipt is, is more, and the gas pump is less. Like, for example, five gallon or $20, but on the gas pump, but on the receipt is like $20.80. So I filed a complaint with the AG. I follow up so many times with the Consumer Protection Agency, and no respond. That's my frustration with the Consumer Protection Agency. You know, they're being paid by taxpayers' money, and they're not responsive to people's complaint. Especially, the gas is a basic commodity. Everybody needs it. It, it hurts me when somebody in front of me can only afford $5 gas, and I'll be peeling up my, my car. You know, that's how some of our people, or maybe 50% of our people are doing, $5, $7, $10, you know? That's why, and then if there's discrepancy on part of the gas pump company because they did not calibrate their gas pump, then it adds insult to injury. You know, like they're being cheated. No, it's not, it's not being addressed by the AG's office. And in fact, up to, that was during the term of the other AG, but in fact, up to now. I also filed a complaint regarding a, another company that, that doesn't provide the, the paying customer drinking wa- faucet water. Their policy for 50 years, they, they changed it. You know, it's, it's a fast food company, major fast food company. I, I think that's another issue, and the AG's office did not respond again. You know, I, I need, I need answer because there are lawsuit in the US and other country, and they got favorable decision from the court that it is a fundamental right for a citizen to have a faucet water from a restaurant or a fast food company. And then this fast food company is charging $1.50 for the cup, just for the cup. I told them that's, that is wrong, and it's still not being addressed by the AG's office. And your, your, this institution have the authority to, to appropriate funding for this, for this Attorney General agency. You know, and you need to conduct oversight against them because they're, they're not responding to people's concern. Thank you, senators.
Thank you, sir. Does any of my colleagues have any questions they wanted to bring up? Senator Therese, we'll start, I'll start with you. It's reference to liquid fuel tax. Ma'am?
I just was hoping that the Department of Public Works was going to be here to account. I thought, I, I wanted to ask them to correct the record that, first of all, in, in the 34th Guam Legislature, one of the first things that we did under the leadership of Speaker Cruz was to stop the diversion of Guam highway funds anywhere else. So I think that that has been done. The second thing, of course, was to ensure that the estimated, at that time, $3.5 million from the increase in liquid fuels tax was going to go directly to roads, nowhere else. And I know, you know, we tried to be very clear about that in the budget, and we also, I put in an extra amendment in the budget to make sure that any remaining funds from that increase was going to go directly to roads. When we, when I first, you know, started to campaign, I have to admit, you know, that roads was the number one thing people complained to me about. And so, looking and looking, that was really, the solution was that, to make sure that the money goes to the roads and to keep track of it. So we put in reporting requirements for DPW, so they report, supposed to be monthly, on the progress of this village streets repairs. And we've seen some of the evidence of this village street repair. And whenever the DPW would come in here during the last term, they, they were very clear about which projects they finished, which one's next, and how they were allocating. So they had to use a, a combination of, of course, appropriations from the Guam Highway Fund, the regular Guam Highway Fund, even before the increase. And they used compact impact money also to add on to that, to fund these roads. And, and then we added on, in the end, any increase that came in was supposed to go only to the roads. So not, not to any of the other needs or, or uses of the Guam Highway Fund, which include buses, we know, and something else. But yeah, I thought, so I, I thought that DPW is making great progress in the road repair with the limited amount of money that they have and use, and maxing it out with the employees that they had at a cost-effective rate. So I was hoping that they would be here to confirm that that's still the progress that we are making, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Thank, thank you, Senator, Senator Terlay. And, and, and you're right. I was really hoping Public Works would be here, but what would I, would oppose to my colleagues that I'll have, I'll call for another hearing on this bill, Senator Moylan, if you have no objection, so that a true report be represented exactly for every penny they receive, for every year they've collected, what roads were in fact repaired? Or, or, or what roads were put in? Because these, this 4% was specifically for secondary roads. And every penny needs to be accounted for. Otherwise, I would support this bill, go forward, and we just take, return the money. I have no problem with that one. If you're not using it for this intent, then it shouldn't be, it shouldn't be, we shouldn't be asking the people who want to, to give you the money. You know, okay? Yes, ma'am?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. But just for the record, I, I agree having another roundtable, bringing DPW. But for the record, I'd also like request the chairman, if they can also provide the information from the time that the increase of this liquid fuel tax until 2019, and, or I'm sorry, 2018, how much money was received and what was spent? I've been asking that, Mr. Chair, for almost three months from DPW. They still have not given me that number. And I know, and I know you've been asking for that too as well. So hopefully, they'll do, they'll bring that information for us. Thank you.
Yes, we will, we will call for that. There being no one else to testify, Senator Moylan, you have, you don't have any objection to, we call for another hearing on this one, this issue. Because I know you want more answers other than just to repeal it.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate that. Thank you so much.
Thank you. There being no one else to testify, and that, it being that I've have the support of, "We're going to have another hearing. We're going to have another hearing." I just got to schedule it. So that being said, if anyone would like to, to still submit any testimony in reference to this bill, in support or even not in support, please submit the, your testimony to the Committee on General Government Operation, Appropriation Housing, and submit it via email, And for all participating in today's hearing, Mr. Linsangan, thank you. And for those at home, thank you for watching. We will, that, this conclude is now 10:44. This concludes for today, Bill 10-35 at 10:44. We will now proceed to Bill 6-35, introduced by Senator Telo Titigui. Ma'am, your opening statement.
Situs Masi, Mr. Chair. Bill 6-35 LS, an act to repeal, 8172 of Article 1, Chapter 8, Title 4 Guam Code Annotated, relative responsible use of taxpayer funds through the elimination of automatic retirement benefits for elective Guam governors, lieutenant governors, and their survivors. Hafiday, Mr. Chair, and thank you for including Bill 6 in today's public hearing and for this opportunity to provide an overview on this measure. Mr. Chair, before I proceed, I would like to say on the record, as I publicly stated during media interviews on this bill since the beginning of this term, that this, that it's my intent for the provisions of this bill to, to apply prospectively, meaning it will not affect the current governor or our past governors who are currently receiving this. It's moving forward on the next election. I've worked closely with the Oversight Committee to ensure Bill 6 is amended accordingly. With this, Mr. Chair, Bill 6 recognizes the Guam law provides automatic retirement benefits for governors and lieutenant governors of Guam. Section 18, 1, Section 8172 of Title 4 Guam Code Annotate authorizes each governor and lieutenant governor to receive 50% of their annual salary at the completion of their term, regardless if they serve one or two consecutive terms. Mr. Chair, based on the current salaries of governors and lieutenant governors, an outgoing governor and lieutenant governor will make the following annuity. Current salary at $90,000, with benefits $113,610, which leaves an annual retirement of $56,880. For lieutenant governor at $85,000, with a salary benefiting at $108,419, leaving an annual retirement of $54,209. Mr. Chair, in reviewing how much of the people of Guam pay in pensions for former governors and lieutenant governors in the last physical years, you're looking at FY 2015 at $251,000, FY 2016 at $251,000, increasing in 2017 to $252,000, 2018, $252,000, FY 19, $290,000. Mr. Chair, in the upcoming FY 2020, you're looking at $340,000 increase from $298,000. This also includes the medical insurance as well as survivor benefits. So in the event a governor or lieutenant governor pass away, their spouse will continue receiving this benefit. From a discussion I had on this matter with Retirement Fund Director Paula Bilas, who, which took place in January of this year, I was informed that a governor and lieutenant governor with prior government of Guam service may decide either to avail themselves of automatic 50% retirement or move forward with their own retirement plan. Mr. Chair, I'm blessed to, to know a number of the former governors and lieutenant governors and their families, and I'm grateful to, to them for having dedicated a part of their lives to public service. Bill 6 does not affect them. However, Mr. Chair, Bill 6 will make clear that going forward, this legislature will do its part to end this special benefit for future governors and lieutenant governors and redirect this money to priorities elected officials always speak of, education, healthcare, and public safety. If I'm not mistaken, our brothers and sisters in the CNMI repealed a similar benefit in 2007 for future governors and lieutenant governors as part of a broader effort to cut spending. Mr. Chair, Bill 6 recognizes that every dollar counts when your, when your only hospital facility is falling apart, when we don't have enough police, police officers and equipment to keep our families safe, and when we have more village and pri- primary roads to fix than the resources to pay for these projects, despite senators in the past deciding to increase taxes. In closing, Mr. Chair, I look forward to comments and suggestions offered during this public hearing. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Senator. Mr. Linsangan.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Senator Titigui, thank you for introducing this bill. While I support it, I, I have a reservation. I only support it for the next governor. I only support it for the next governor and beyond, but not with the past governor, lieutenant governor, and the current governor and lieutenant governor. Because when they run for office, they know already there's a package. But for the next governor in 2020, 2022, at least, they know that there's no more benefits for them to avail. Because it's like how many first lady, golden treasured first lady we have, and their salary, the salary of their husband when they were governor, were almost like 70% lower than the current governor, and they're only getting 20% of that. I believe we need to respect and dignify these, these first ladies that are still here with us. My, my issue is if a former governor ran for another position, and he won, then he should lose the annuity or his benefits. You know, he need to just stick with his salary, or like, for example, as a congressman, or another, or another governor, or became a governor again, because they can run again. Even to say they can have the salary of the governor, and then at the same time, they, they will have 50% again of the salary from their last salary as a governor. That's what I would like you to amend, because they gonna, they will be paying one and a half their salary as the current governor, and then 50% again of their last salary as a governor. Second, if they are appointed by the governor in a key position, they shouldn't be abailing any, any more benefits or salary on this one. They should only choose the, they have the option to select the salary as, as a key staff of the governor, because they are being paid twice again by the taxpayers of Guam. That's my issue, because, as you know, even Governor Calvo, Governor Camato can run for congressman or for next governor again. How about if they win? You know, they'll be getting two salary, salary as a governor, and then 50% of the salary again. That's what you need to be amended. And then, on the part of the first ladies, I, please just stick with, with the, with their current, whatever they're getting. You know, I'm, I'm, I'm a support to status quo up to this current governor and lieutenant governor, but with amendments, the, the one I enumerated. You know, if you cannot be paying them double, you know? And, and, uh, this, this bill have a very good intention to save the taxpayers' money. You know, it's very, very nice intention. And, but there are other ways to, to generate more revenue for the government, like, for instance, follow-up with President Trump, the promised 60 million he made to our governor for the income tax payment. You know? And so many other things, once you just combine all your, your heads, there will, will come up to a more generating revenue to support those people that have served us. So, I believe it's unfair that we take out those annuity, those benefits for, uh, from the last, from the previous governor. That's my position, Senator. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Does any of my colleagues have any question of Mr. Nisan? Senator Telo, would you like to close?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And rest assured in my testimony that we'll make sure it, it applies to the next governor and lieutenant governor. Okay?
Thank you, Senator.
Thank you. There being, um, no one else to testify. The committee will conclude the public hearing on Bill Number 10-35 LS. Committee will continue to receive testimony for the next 10 days. Please address your written testimony to the Committee on General Government Operation, Appropriation, Housing, and submit it via email to senatorjoessenagustin@gmail.com. Sideside for your attendance and participation in today's hearing of Bill Number 10. And for those at home, thank you for watching. We will now proceed to Bill 40-35, also introduced by Senator Titigui. And I'd ask the one and only Deputy Director of Revenue and Tax, please have a seat while Senator Telo will give her opening statement. Thank you.
Sideside, Mr. Chair. And, um, Bill Number 40-35 COR, an act to amend 3229C, 7 of Article 2, Chapter 3, Division 1, Title 12, Guam Code Annotated, relative to establishing the Alcohol Beverage Compliance Fees and Fines Fund. Hafaday and everyone, and, uh, thank you, Mr. Chair, again for including Bill 40 in today's public hearing and for this opportunity to briefly introduce the measure involving a topic brought to my attention by the former leadership of the Department of Revenue and Taxation. Mr. Chair, Bill 40 seeks to establish the Alcohol Beverage Compliance Fees and Fines Fund, which is recognized in two public laws. Public Law 31-99 enacted April of 2012, and Public Law 32-51 enacted in July of 2013 by Senator Dennis Rodriguez. Mr. Chair, for the benefit of the listening audi, audience, Public Law 31-99 established guidelines for taste-sampling events involving alcoholic beverages. Public Law 32-51 concerns training requirements for servers, sellers, managers, and supervisors. However, my office, DOA, and the Department of Revenue and Taxation have been able to locate the public law formally establishing the Alcohol Beverage Compliance Fees and, and Fines Fund. And, Mr. Chair, Public Law 31-99 and Public Law 32-51 both references the fund, but neither public law establishes the fund, which is the purpose of Bill 40, creating the legal authorization for fees and fines to be collected, deposited, and expended accordingly. In closing, Mr. Chair, I look forward to comments and suggestions offered during this public hearing, and will work closely with your office on any amendments that may be needed to strengthen Bill 40 going forward, including the Guam Code Annotated title cited in the bill, which will be changed from Title 12, Mr. Chair, to correct that title to Title 11. Sideside, Mr. Chair, for moving forward with Bill 40.
Thank you, Senator. Ms. Santos, Deputy Director.
Morning, Senators. Uh, my name is Michelle Santos. I'm the Deputy Director at Revenue and Taxation. This morning, um, I'd like to, um, give our thoughts on Bill, uh, the Bill 40-35. It proposes to create the ABC Fees and Fines Fund at the Department of Revenue and Taxation that is separate and apart from other accounts for use to fund and promote responsible drinking and driving practices, youth programs, public service, and educational programs, and other activities authorized by law. It further states that the department shall establish and maintain this account and use monies collected for the programs as approved by the ABC Board. Over the past three years, the department has annually collected over $40,000 from ABC cards issued, and varies depending on when renewals are scheduled. While the department supports the intent of the bill, it is unclear if the Department of Administration will allow Department of Revenue and Taxation to establish a separate bank account, as described herein. We are also concerned that the bill improperly prohibits the administrator, which is the director, from spending said funds without prior ABC approval. Wish to thank you, Senators Sinagustine and members of the committee, for this opportunity to submit testimony on Bill Number 40.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I, I have one question, and then I'll ask the author. Or, or I'll start with the author first, and then I'll, I'll be at the end. Ma'am, do you have any questions you want to pose on? Senator Moylan, do you have anything? Senator Castro? Senator Lee? Senator Titigui? You have anything you want to ask the Deputy Director? Not about collecting taxes, just about ABC only, huh? Okay. Okay, thank you. I just thought I'd throw that out. Okay, let me just go ahead and ask you the question. Could you tell us exactly how much was collected on the very first year when it went into effect?
I believe it was about $119,000.
$119,000. I was also the acting supervisor at the time.
I'm sorry?
I was the acting supervisor at the time. The sad part, and just let, so the, the listening audience understand that the administration knew they were supposed to establish the account. And all it is, is they, they have account number, they tell ABC Office, this is the account number, they write it on the receipt, when the vendor comes in, they make the payment, they go to, uh, Treasury of Guam, they file it, Treasury of Guam knows what the account is supposed to go to. They never did that. Quite obvious. Second one is that the first year was $100,000. That's $30 for every ABC card and everything else. How much was the following year? What was the next year? That's 100, 140?
52,000 in 2017, and in 2018, it was 40,290.
So, you're looking at almost $200,000 that ABC is entitled to today?
Yes.
Because, you know, that money doesn't just go away. It's just sitting somewhere. So, maybe we need to convince DOA to remit the funds or allow it to be available for the ABC side of the house to use, correct?
Yes. We're, we're working on, we have been working on establishing the account with Department of Administration.
Okay, because, because, because you don't, we don't need a law to establish an account. Am I correct, or, or do you believe?
No, not with DOA, but this law says a bank, separate bank account. And I'm not sure line agencies are allowed to have separate bank accounts.
I understand Senator Telo Titigui's intent is to make sure it happens.
Yes.
And so that the funds is specifically used for the purpose of enforcement, uh, compliance, and everything that's related towards ABC, which is very inclusive, and a lot of the, I think, a lot of, uh, of the people of Guam don't understand, ABC is not just alcohol beverage control. It's everything regulatory.
Exactly.
At the Department of Tax. So, we, we need to make sure we understand that, because the ABC branch is really not, it's only the Alcohol Beverage Control Board, that's the only thing that's ABC. Everybody else in that office is compliance officers.
Yes.
And they need, I think the people of Guam needs to make sure we differentiate that ABC is just a title, but the whole function of the compliance branch is everything regulatory on that side of the building. And that's what we need to make sure is very specific, I guess, maybe on this bill. And I don't know how, I think we're gonna have to ask legal to check on how we can pass a law to make sure there's a current bank, because I don't know, I, I do not know of any other agency that has their own bank account. No, it's all at DOA.
Not if there's a line, if there're line agencies.
It's just the account numbers and making sure they report it correctly so that everybody knows what's available.
Yes.
Okay. Ma'am, do you have anything?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and I appreciate your also, um, contributing to this bill to ensure that the monies goes where it was intended. And I'm gonna read a section here on public law, the, the first public law that was implemented that actually cited the beverage alcohol compliance fee. And it was monies collected, and this is in the Section 7, monies collected from assessment of fees, all monies collected for the non-recurring fee and/or the expedited process fee shall be deposited into a separate account called the Alcoholic Beverage Compliance Fees and Fines Fund. The administrator with board approval shall be authorized to use the monies collected for this program to comply. But in here, in this bill, it never creates the fund. It just names it, but does not create it. And what my bill is intended to do is to create the fund legally and by law, and you have to. It has to be by law. You're creating a fund, then you need to hear you're only speaking of it. And then in Public Law 32-15, again, it references the same account, but it was never created. So, what Bill 40, uh, does is just create, make sure it's created legally and that it is deposited into the account as the true intent of the bill, um, was written for. Now, I, I noticed here on, on your, um, concerns, uh, which I probably will get with the Committee Chair to discuss this, um, and that is, uh, the improperly prohibits the administrator from spending said funds without prior ABC Board approval.
Right now, we can spend our money without having to go to the board for approval.
But if it's put in this special account, I believe the intention in Public Law 30-119 specifically says, that I was just reading to you in Section 7, that it has to be by the approval of the board.
Board meets twice a month. You know, if we have something that we have to procure immediately, I, I don't know how we're gonna get around that, but, yeah. See what I'm saying?
Yeah. Well, this, it says clearly here, the administrator with board approval shall be authorized to use the money collected in the program.
What if the board doesn't have a quorum?
Well, like most boards, yeah, I, I understand your concern. Unfortunately, you know, the, that's one of the issues about boards, you know, not having, you know, I don't, I don't know what to say to that, Mr. Chair, other than to ensure that...
Maybe we should amend the previous laws in Bill 40. I mean, you know, change the bill to amend it to...
Yeah, I, I'll get with the Committee Chair and look at that, something that would help utilize this money where it was intended to be used and, um, the oversight, because again, it, it does require board approval to spend it, so...
I, I, I think Senator Telo and Madam Deputy, maybe we can amend, amend this bill to add on, but we have to identify the section in that law to add on to this bill. And the reason why I'm stating this, so that we can have the allowance to do that. And then we, and that if we, if it is to allow the Deputy Director or Director to spend, it's gotta be consistent with the intent of the fund.
Yes.
Okay, and that's, that's how we want to word it, so that Senator Telo and I will be, when we look at the money, we're not saying, "Hi, she, Michelle, she bought a car for CIBA, not for ABC." I, I just say this, just jokingly, okay, Michelle? Is that, we, we, we know that's how it's been with agencies, okay?
Yeah.
They try to take care of each other, and I understand that. And we're, and you're gonna end up sharing anyway the equipment, we know that. But at least if it's consistent with the intent of the fund, then it's okay.
Yes.
And I, and I believe we can, we can introduce that. And I'll work with this, the, the author of the bill, so we can work in and see how we can get legal to make sure it's right.
Yeah.
And it's legally sound.
Well, you know, you know, however it works out, uh, it would just have to mean that our department has to plan things better so that we do get the approval of the board if, you know, that doesn't change. We just have to plan things better and make sure that it's in enough time to...
I, I think with having the verbiage consistent with the intent of the law, it would even force the board, they can say, "Go ahead, Deputy," or "Go ahead, Director," and because they have the authority. No, 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 it's not consistent, the law.
Oh, yes.
Sorry. Doesn't matter who you are, Board, you can't do that.
Yeah.
Okay, we, I just want to make sure that we have that understood. Do you have anything else? Any, any other senators have anything they want to bring up? If not, um, if not, uh, there being none, the committee will conclude the public hearing on Bill 40-35, the COR. Committee will continue to receive testimony for the next 10 days. Please address your written testimony to the Committee on General Government Operation, Appropriation, Housing, and submit it via email to senatorjoessenagustin@gmail.com. And Sideside for your attendance today and participation in today's hearing. And for those at home, thank you for watching. It is now 11:09. This concludes Bill 40-35. We will now proceed to Bill 74-35, as introduced by Speaker Tina Munya Barnes. And we have, um, uh, we have Austin Shelton here today, and Conchita Titigui, and we have Larry Cass. Jigu, Jigu Ruz, I'm just kidding. Because Titigui from back row. Uh, we will, let me read off the bill. Bill 74, introduced by Speaker Tina Munya Barnes, an act to appropriate $350,000 to University of Guam relative to creating and funding the Island Sustainability Outreach and Action, the ISOA program. We'll begin with you, Mr. Larry, because Larry Cass, which one's Larry Cass? Okay, like they did when Mr. Atkins was in and Mr. Jones was there, like, "Miss Cass, we'll begin with you," and then I- with you, and then after you. Swing to Shelton, then we save the youngest for last. Okay, Larry?
I wanted to bring to your attention that we pay an extremely amount, an extremely large amount of money to try to get products recycled here on Guam. It costs me a hundred and forty-four thousand dollars a year to pay to have plastic bottles taken off island. We need to create sustainability on this island. And this bill takes a step that direction. You'll have to excuse me, I'm not looking at the whole bill, I'm looking from the solid waste aspect of it, since that's my responsibility. And this is a bill that would help in the long run for the island of Guam. It is a fund that this is the, an allowed use for this fund. It should be expended in a way that it can generate additional revenues, which that's one of the things that the University of Guam can do, is utilize this money as matching grants to increase the actual value of the money that we have in the program. And the University of Guam would be the most qualified people to set up this program, because they would be in touch with land-grant universities and things throughout the country who have research currently going on and find things that could actually be site specific, changed and put into place for Guam. It is the area where most of the knowledge is located. So I just wanted to give my support to the bill and say that this is something that has to be done sooner or later, is we gotta look at sustainability on this island, because we can't keep shipping things away.
Great, Larry. Mr. Shelton.
Hafaday, Chairman St. Augustine, and members of the committee, my name is Dr. Austin Shelton. I'm an Assistant Professor of Extension and Outreach at the University of Guam, and I serve as the Director of the UOG Center for Island Sustainability and UOG Sea Grant Programs. Island Sustainability ensures that the needs of the present are met without compromising the ability of future generations to meet their needs. The University of Guam Center for Island Sustainability was established in two thousand nine to lead and support the transition of island communities toward a sustainable future. I am pleased to testify in support of Bill seventy-four dash thirty-five introduced by Speaker Tina Munya Barnes, which would establish the Island Sustainability Outreach and Action Program. I thank the Speaker for introducing this bill and recognizing our capabilities at the University of Guam Center for Island Sustainability to carry out such an important initiative for our community. The Island Sustainability Outreach and Action Program would allow us to increase awareness of sustainability issues and cultivate action at the village level. CIS would work with the Mayor's Council to identify municipalities where we will work and partner with mayors to assess needs and priorities of their residents. Island Sustainability Coordinators will serve as community organizers and guide residents to carry out activities such as establishing community gardens, stabilizing shorelines and coastal villages with natural vegetation to prevent coastal erosion, and organizing awareness campaigns to curb illegal dumping. We would also work closely with the Guam Solid Waste Authority to educate the community in proper waste disposal and recycling. One of our current activities at CIS of the Center for Island Sustainability is establishing the Guam Green Growth Initiative. Guam's economy is primarily supported by military and government spending and tourism. Guam Green Growth, or G3, will spark a new green economy through the cultivation of a circular economy, which aims to design out waste and regenerate natural systems. New circular businesses that take waste from one industry, EPR, which you might have heard of, that takes discarded banana trees and turns them into vegan leather wallets that they sell around the world. I was encouraged to see at the recent Pacific Island Environment Conference that Guam EPA is also working on the circular economy with Jacobs, their consulting firm based in Australia. If established through this legislation, we envision that the Island Sustainability Outreach and Action Program will bring these ideas and resources on the circular economy home to the village level. The program will help develop our local workforce and create opportunities for our community. We hope to work closely with Guam EPA to help our island meet expectations and goals for the Recycling Revolving Fund. Investing a small percentage of the overall fund locally into CIS, the Center for Island Sustainability, will allow us to work closely with Guam EPA, Guam Solid Waste Authority, and our village mayors to provide substantial impacts for all partners. A major benefit of this proposed appropriation to graduate our sea grant program from a coherent area program to a sea grant institution. So this means that we could nearly triple the local investment as we become eligible for one million dollars in federal sea grant funds each year. With our expertise in research and education programs reaching over eight thousand community members each year, CIS is well suited to run the Island Sustainability Outreach and Action Program. Thank you for your consideration, and I'd like to also mention that our Acting President, Dr. Anita Borja Enriquez, and President Kreiss are supportive of this legislation and have submitted written testimony. And this week, I'm also expecting written testimony from our Island Sustainability Community Advisory Board Chair, Ms. Jackie Maratti, and Peggy Denny from I Recycle. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Shelton. Ms. Titunu from Zigu.
Mr. Chairman, and honorable members of the Guam Legislature, thank you for this opportunity to comment. Our administrator was unable to make it today due to unforeseen circumstances, but I am here in his stead. So bear with me. Guam EPA understands and appreciates the role of higher learning institutions, but it cannot support this bill in its current form. And really, for the following reasons. The first one is the law. The Recycling Revolving Fund law is very clear. The use of the RRF is to support and encourage recycling. This is what the people expect, because that is what the people were told when they pay the additional twenty-five dollars when they register their vehicles every year. The contents of this bill does not provide an obvious nexus to supporting and encouraging recycling. We do agree with sustainability, but like I said, in its current form, it goes against what is in the law. I would like to add that Guam EPA, through several, two years of dialogue with the community and the Office of the Attorney General of Guam, as well as OPA, drafted the RRF regulations. It's gone through the AAA process, was accepted by the AG, accepted by the Office of the Governor, and was recently transmitted to the legislature. These draft regulations detail what the funds can be used for in concert with the existing statutes. And I'd like to add, Mr. Chairman, that we are working with our Oversight Chairperson on amendments to Tang GCA Chapter fifty-one, Article three, so that way it could be more in synchronization with Guam's Zero Waste Plan. The third point I'd like to add is that it should be noted that the Governor of Guam submitted the FY twenty-twenty Executive Budget Request to the Legislature, which fully appropriates, appropriates the projected revenues in its entirety to Guam EPA. And this is being done because, well, because of the additional projects with multi-sectoral partnerships that are part of the good governance expected to be executed under the purview of the executive branch. And, and I have it up here, and I, I was supposed to present this before the governors, what, you know, the progress of, of the Zero Waste Plan, but these are some of the examples. We, there was a food waste guidance document for, for small island communities developed, and an assessment done using this guidance. What we found out was pretty, you know, astounding. Because of that, we have been in dialogue with GHRA Sanctuary and the Dedado Mayor's Office for a food recovery project. And when I say GHR, because we've actually targeted a certain hotel that's willing to participate. We just need to work out the additional details with the public health. We're all, because of this project, we are doing a partnership with the Bureau of Statistics and Plans for a food recovery symposium. One of the other tasks, or part of the initiatives that we're looking at, as I mentioned before, is amendments to Tang GCA Chapter fifty-one, Article three. And why that needs to be changed, and we, we've provided some comments to, to Senator Perez on this, is because the Zero Waste Plan calls for a hundred thousand dollars to be given out in grants to stimulate pilot projects. We also would like to have the, the statute changed to include a revolving loan, a fund that will, that revolves, so that way it can get, we could, those can be provided to small business or cottage industries. We'd like to have that statute changed, so that these funds could be available to DSR, to DVR, and the Manomko, who participate in these, in various types of recycling. And you've seen what they make with the bottles, with the plastics. In talking to, to Director Phyllis Leon Guerrero, you know she wants to, you know, build that vocational rehabilitation building of hers, and we talked, she's, she's very interested in getting the equipment to get those with disabilities working on these projects. I got more. When I talked about the, when I talked about the food recovery, I wanted to show, I wanted to share with you about Guam's field data, and that of, there's about sixty-four hundred tons per year of food waste generated on Guam from grocery stores, hotels, and restaurants, and this food could be avoided, recovered, and diverted. And I asked the contractors, what does that mean? What does sixty-four hundred tons of food per year mean? Because I really, I can't picture that. I can't get my hands around. And what they said was, if that food were processed to generate biogas or renewable energy, it could power a hundred Guam homes and save sixty-seven thousand barrels of oil per year. So yes, Guam EPA believes in sustainability. I'm just saying, in the, by face value with this proposed bill, this may not, it, it doesn't fit. And why, and what we plan for, to use for this money, I'm telling you, it's based on the data, the field data that we have received. And I wanna say also, in the area of food waste, and I'm gonna get this down, is that when we did this presentation before Bank of Guam, but we also found out, what we, what we presented is that based on twenty-fourteen data, that twenty-nine percent of the population are on food assistance. So can you imagine how we could help those who need food by diverting good food, instead of it going to where it's going right now, mostly to the landfill? It's perfectly good food. Why can't we use the food to feed the hungry? Now, obviously, we need to work those details out, but we are on it. We have a project on greening roadway pavement systems, based on the data that I have. We are in partnership with the Trades Academy to use, to get glass, using the most low-tech technology to use it with, to use it on their, on their, their parking lot. We're in partnership with the Dedado Mayor and DPW on using, on looking at using glass for roadway systems in one of their tertiary roads. We are in partnership, we're in dialogue with GWA and GPA on the use of, of, of glass and tires, shredded tires in some of their systems. And I wanna add that the money that we, and I'm saying, this is, this is stuff that we've got the contract, but we've got expanded projects that we're anticipating. So we're looking at partnering with the Bureau of Statistics and Plans on not only working on updating our waste characterization study, but also profiling what's in the illegal dump sites. And in terms of circular economy, Guam, and I thank you, Dr. Shelton, for mentioning this. But yes, we had a mind-mapping discussion with Zero, the Zero Waste folks out of Glasgow, and it's Scotland, and, and Australia, to look at plastics. So not only when we do the characterization study, we're gonna look at not, not just the percentage of plastics, but what types of plastics, and more importantly, the branding. Which companies are branding this, these types of plastics, so we can have those critical conversations when the time comes about, how can we do something, how, how can we change this?
Ms. Titunu?
Yes.
The bill is to provide UOG-
Oh, I'm going off. Thank you.
I, I don't want you to go off, because I, I, I like what you're talking about. But I wanna talk about that when we're talking about EPA and then, and the island, because that's what Larry needs to get involved in. But the area of UOG, you don't agree with him, you don't agree with the bill because-
That's right.
The way the law is written. What would you recommend to assist, to support the bill, or you're just gonna say, no, the law is fine, you don't need it, and leave alone, and UOG, find another source of money? I, I just need to hear, we just need to hear that, because that's what we, that's what the bill is about.
And my apologies. And, and I was going, and I get a bit passionate with this, and I, and the reason why I, thank you.
It's okay.
It's, it, it, it's saying no, and this is why. And when I was going down this list, it's to illustrate, buletz et zota, okay? And it's not because, you know, Conchita's being stingy or being greedy. It's, we really have projects, projects that are, that, that we plan to do, and they're ongoing. And that, that's why it wasn't enough for us to say, no. It's no because, and this is why, sir. And so I wanna say that in its current form, we cannot support it, because it does not, it, there is no language in there, there's no nexus that supports or encourages recycling. Now, what we prefer is we, we, we do wanna work with the CIS, and we hope to have critical conversations with the CIS, preferably before going into a legislative hearing. We have not had this discussion. And I, in fact, I was just talking to Dr. Shelton. I said, eh, could we have talked about it before we went before the legislature? And he understands this. And we will have, we will have this conversation. I know that he, he is, he is scheduling to, to meet with the administrator. But we've had no discussion before this hearing, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, okay. So I, I, I agree with you.
And that's it. I'm done.
Thank you. From Zigu. We'll start with Senator Waylon first, and then I'll work my way to my right. Okay, Senator Waylon? Nothing? Senator Telo?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Larry, I appreciated your, your testimony. However, are you aware that there is a climate change executive order, twenty fifteen dash zero eight, relative to addressing the impact of climate change that the governor implemented? Are you aware of that? Okay.
No, I'm not.
Okay. I'd be happy to share that after this public hearing, to show you that they are addressing it at the governor's level. And are you also aware that there was a bill that was passed, seventy-nine dash thirty-four, in the last Guam Legislature, calling for the Guam C-three PR, which also addresses, on a legislative level, climate change? I'll be happy to, you don't. Okay. That's why when I heard your testimony earlier, I think that maybe you weren't aware of these, these groups, that this task force, and also this legislation that became public law to address climate change in, in these scenarios. So I'll be happy to share it with you. You know, I appreciate your testimony, Conchita. I truly believe your, your intent is, you know, is good all around, in both climate change, and both recycling, and marrying the two to make sustainability, you know, to bring sustainability. And I, I appreciate that. And I, I have some issues with this bill as well. You know, taking away from Peter to pay Paul is not the way to go, but I'm comfortable knowing that we have these two task forces together to address climate change, and I hope to incorporate the University of Guam's input into these task forces too, on a legislative level, and as well as the executive branch's level. And looking forward to working with you. Thank you, Mr. Chair, for the opportunity.
Thank you. Senator Castro?
Since this was mostly, Mr. Chairman, I thank you all for your testimonies. If I could, since this was low, keep it a haggle, Conchita, against you, now, hallo, me, ta- If I could, sisusmasi, loki pataha go, conchita, gen sinenu na halum i testimonio, or i katamo, or i hena sonmo kikumetea. I'm very curious about the reasons that you stated for the record, and also, Dr. Shelton, if I may, or if we could be invited to that discussion. A lot of times, I like to at least listen to some of the discourse between the university, the executive branches, and, and other not-for-profits. Yourself as well, Mr. Gas, and, and I share the concern, not that, I wouldn't say it's a concern, but I share the curiosity of Senator Titugue and the numerous climate change initiatives and entities that we have. And I'm much more curious about the overall strategic direction we're taking as an island, and how we can all work together. So with the limited amount of monies available, I'd like to sit down and listen to what we have to share with one another. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator Castro. Senator Titunow, do you have anything?
Hafide and sisusmasi for everybody for coming here. It is good to hear, I mean, important to hear from the various entities and the various perspectives, because we, we do want to go in the right direction. We do need to think about these things very carefully. We have limited land, we have a limited ability to deal with what is coming into our island, and there's a whole lot coming into our island. And so it's, it's important to hear about the different programs that are in place. I have a question from the speaker, since she wasn't able to be here today, and I'll ask that. But I'll ask mine first, and mine are just fairly short and straightforward. So currently, it was described as a similar effort occurring, at least in the part of that encouraging that circular economy. There is a group from Australia. So is there a thought that there would be, I guess this would be to EPA and then also the UOG? Dr. Austin could weigh in on this as well. If, if those efforts are ongoing, and we're also having potentially something happening at UOG, would we be duplicating some very similar efforts? Or would they be working alongside each other? Would you say?
If I could make a comment. So when we, when we engaged in the mind mapping side event during the PIEC, we essentially got, we had all the, we knew what the end result, the end result that, that we, we wanted. We knew where we wanted to end. But that would entail partnerships to include the higher learning institutions. So again, we, there is conversation that needs to happen between Guam EPA and the University of Guam to include the Guam Community College. So, so those were, that, those are in the plans. Guam EPA cannot act alone.
Sisusmasi for that. And then for Dr. Shelton, if you have something to add, or a different perspective?
Sure. I, I think that, based on, on the mind mapping exercise that Ms. Titunow was explaining, I don't think that we would be duplicating things. We actually have a different perspective. And I certainly don't think that we should, we should be in opposition with all of these ideas. I think EPA is bringing really great planning and ideas, and we want to be partners in that. And I think that they have lots of great ideas for partners, and they realize that they can't do it all on, on their own, and that's why they have consultants from Glasgow and Australia. But we have local expertise here that I think what we can offer that's really important is turning the circular economy idea into the island context. And so you can't, so I think what, what's being done right now is that there's this really big systems approach, but we need to bring it home. We're the experts in community engagement, bring it to the village level, and as Ms. Titunow said, working with GCC and, you know, people who can implement these projects. We're putting together a $20 million grant for business incubators and maker spaces that we are going to cultivate new island circular economy industries. And I think the whole bill, even though maybe it doesn't say specifically recycling, 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 that's what we're doing, is going to be reducing waste through action and education. And I, I think we're really going to be a good partner to complement their work, and it's just a small percentage of the overall Recycling Revolving Fund, and I hope that we can find a way to work together. And I think we will meet the intent of the law and make sure that we're having visible impacts for EPA, for the Mayors, and for GovGuam in spending the people's funds. I think we're going to be a great partner, and we're very capable.
Sisusmasi for that. So my other question would be, giving the monies that are currently existing in the revolving recycling fund available, and the projected projects that EPA has, the projected approaches that UOG has, is there enough money for both projects and an outreach program at this point?
Actually, part of the contract with Jacobs is to include an outreach, actually, there is, there's an outreach and education component. If you take a look at Article 3 of 10 GCA Chapter 51, it specifically calls out contracting for outreach and education. That's been done. The outline is complete. The next step is execution. But when they execute, they will, when the contractor, in fact, even though Jacobs is the primary contractor, the subcontractor, the group that's really doing the outreach and education plan, is green light media production. That's under Therese Arroyo Matanani. So we understand that even though we have a contractor that's from San Agutne, we needed to make sure that we act, we act locally. So, so a local company is, is contracted to do that work, and part of that work is working with the community, not in a vacuum. So there may be duplication. I don't know. We haven't had, this is the first time we've actually talked at the hearing. So there, we need to talk first.
Right, right. And I think having future discussions will, will be important, definitely, and, and, I mean, they are going to occur at some point. So forgive me if I missed it. Did you say that there would or would not be enough money to cover both? If, you know, if the bill went forward and we did go, did go forward with it?
I tell you, at this point, what was submitted by the, by the Governor's Office is the total amount in its, in its entirety to go to Guam EPA. And I firmly believe it has a lot to do with the projects that are, are, that are going to be executed. So no, I mean, no, we do not support it. And, and we do need to talk first. I mean, by face value? But you know, Senator, you're asking me a question that, you know, well, maybe, until we can sit down and say, what is it that you intend to do? Because we have no, I don't know. This is the first time we're having this discussion. So I don't know what it is they, they plan to do that is, that it's related, that is related to recycle, to supporting and encouraging recycling. And we have it, and if we have that discussion, then we can also bring in our contractor and say, look, this is what we're doing. Because by the way, part of the work that our contractor is doing is calculating carbon emission, you know, carbon emissions. So there is a greenhouse gas, a climate change component in this outreach and education plan. But we need to talk. So there's no duplication of efforts.
So we've, we've touched on the duplication of efforts. Could you provide me the amount that is in the recycling, the revolving recycling fund right now?
Yes. Yes, we do. 2.8? Roughly 2.8 million.
Okay. And so one of the things that was mentioned in the testimony in support of the bill from UOG was to also tackle illegal dumping. So have there been discussions on your end? I mean, there's, there's a broader array of work to do. So is illegal dumping something that has been part of the discussions thus far?
Yes. What we've done is this, because it's really interesting, because if you look at the Zero Waste Plan, and one of the initiatives they, they support is pay as you throw. Well, because the, the way the current system is, in other words, people, you're not required, it's, there's no, the collection of solid waste is not associated with a necessary utility, if you will. It's optional. We're still seeing illegal dumping. So even though it's an option, and it's, and it could be cheaper if you, if you do self-haul, it's, it's not as efficient. So what we're doing right now, or we've, we've tasked Jacobs to do, is to do a white paper on the possibility of tacking on the, the billing, the solid waste collection billing to a utility.
So it's, it's good to know that there's been some discussion about that. I think, putting my social scientist hat on, that it's very complex, it's been a longstanding issue, there are likely multiple elements that are ongoing that contribute to this. So one of the things we, we might think about is that a multifaceted approach might be the best way to, to handle something like illegal dumping, because I think there are going to be all kinds of socioeconomic factors, there are going to be traditions, just all sorts of elements that are there. But it is good to hear. It helps me understand some of the work that EPA has been doing in that sort of effort. I think the question that I was given by the speaker has been answered. So I'll, I'll go ahead and defer to the next Senator. Sisusmasi.
Senator Sabina, the Oversight on EPA. Ma'am.
Thank you, Senator San Augustine. So yes, there's a lot of updates, I think, that we need to go through. I think it's very important that, I mean, it's unfortunate that there wasn't a dialogue between CIS and Guam EPA, because I think you both are pushing for the same agenda, which is zero waste. And I think there could be a synergistic relationship here, because, you know, we, just to let, let the public know, we were working, we're working on a zero waste grants program to augment the revolving recycling fund rules and regs, as well as the authorizing Guam EPA to, to do that. So we are, it's actually almost ready for introduction. And so I see that as a perfect fit for CIS, as far as grants, programs go, that, you know, this is, the missions are similar, they're very similar. And I see that what they're doing is going to supplement, or at least help move towards zero waste. So I would like to see more of that cohesion, more of that collaboration, I think, because for us to get to zero waste, it's going to take that. You know, we can't be working in silos. And especially if resources are, are limited, I think there is an opportunity for us to really create that zero waste program here on Guam. And with what Dr. Shelton is, you know, in my discussions with Dr. Shelton, you know, there's a potential to actually bring in more money with this $350,000. So it could really augment the zero waste efforts from Guam EPA. I think there's a way we can work together on this, and that, you know, you know, maybe a different approach would be appropriate as far as having grants, research, the research part of it that you were mentioning earlier. It's, yeah, you guys, there's ways we can work together on this, I think. And we'll, we'll be sitting down very shortly on this to talk about the draft bill. So I'll be asking both of you maybe to come in, and we could talk more about how we can get this working. That's it.
Thank you. I, I just want to understand where the funding is going to come from. But as I look at the bill, the intent is first establish first the program. And I agree with that. Where the money will come from, being the Oversight on Appropriation, if the Governor gave you 2.8 million, if there is in fact 2.8, I don't know, as soon as I get to my office, I'll support you. If there's more than 2.8, don't ask for more, because that's all you're going to get, because that's all the, I, I tease that, I say that teasingly, because there are many stands where the Governor has identified in her budget, she gave so much to certain agencies, and then we found out there's a lot less available, and in some areas, there's a lot more. And I stand the ground that if you're only given this much, if it's there, we'll, we'll accept it and we move forward. But if there's more, then it's, you know, sharing is caring, and more than one head is better than, you know, two heads are better than one. And you got two aspects of that, and I think, we'll just, we'll work on it. I won't, I won't conclude this hearing on this one, because if there's any issues that are brought up with the Oversight on EPA, and the Oversight on University of Guam, and they come to an agreement, and we identify another source fund, then we can redirect how this bill should move, instead of just ending the bill, and then it's not going to go anywhere. So I'd rather we, we would, we would suspend the bill until we get more information, so we can add to it or amend the bill, exactly what Conchita was mentioning from Zigu. I say that because we're both from Zigu. But there's no one else to testify, and there being none, the committee will conclude the public hearing on Bill 74-35, well, we'll suspend the hearing on Bill 74-35. And if anybody has any testimony they'd like to submit, please submit it to the Committee on General Government Operation Appropriation and Housing. Submit it via email, senatorjoesonangsten.com. Sisusmasi for your attendance and participation in today's hearing. And I look, and for those at home, thank you for watching. It is now 11:47. And thank you for, and have a nice day.